All right, next item is public comments. Mr. Kasimis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments, again, when your name is called, please come up to the podium. Please give us your name and the address for the record. And you will have three minutes, and please keep your comments civil. First, we have Mr. Douglas Peoples.
Hi, Doug Peoples, 25 Pogany Street. I need to ask the board a question about their drop ad in the high schools, the new drop ad policy that they have come with this year. I need to get a clarification on that in terms of courses. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, Tony?
Yes, there's no change in the policy in the student handbook. Very clear that when you're registering for courses, please speak with your counselors. Because once you sign up for a course, you can't drop it after unless there's an extenuating certificate for the first two weeks of school. They just work on students who don't have complete schedules. Is that new, is right in the handbook?
Then if a student, and in this particular case that I'm here for, if a student knows that he's, feels that he's not going to do well in a class, and even though he's signed up in the summer just before he left school, and he's there two weeks, and he does it at the beginning of school, why would he not be able to go to a class that is needed for him, in this case, under NCAA rules, that may fit the NCAA so that he can get his grade point average that he needs and be a part of the clearinghouse?
Do you have any discussion with the school? And go through that and work that out?
Okay. Okay, because I work closely with athletes, and to have a kid get a B in a, an F in a class when he knows he's not going to do well, when he had the ability to change it at the beginning of the year and get a B, or work hard at getting a B, I think that particular policy might hurt that particular person.
Okay, so Tony, you'll discuss the procedure? Thank you. Okay.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Stanley Shuler.
My name's Stanley Shuler. I live in 97 McKinley Avenue, Strath, Connecticut. I'm the president of Local 1042. I just came to talk to the board because I was a little troubled. Last week, I gave some information privately just for the board, for them to go over this stuff. I'm not going to give the particulars, but what I'm upset was the information that I gave the board, the individual came to my school and questioned me about certain things because we have an ongoing issue concerning some grievance that we filed. And so I was upset with that, that the board members, that I gave secret for your information to talk amongst yourself, will give that individual that information that came from me. And it wasn't my intent to do it publicly or something like that. It's my thing to give to the board. So I'm really upset with that. So there's a big mistrust with me with the board that I can't even share information that I think is detrimental to our union or things that our people are going through because I am the president of my union, and I've been in charge, and I took an oath to work with these guys, and they had issues and complaints. They come to me, and I bring that to the board. But there's the problem if I can't share something, I think secretly, with the board of what's going on without board members giving that to the individual. So I'm really disappointed with that, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and that's it for public comments.
Okay. I just want to comment on Mr. Shuler's statement that he may be unaware of the laws in this state, but once you provide a document to, well, I don't think he had any interest in what I was going to say. Once you provide a document to the Board of Education, it becomes a public record. There are very limited situations in which information is protected from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act, but to provide documents to the board, you make it a public document as soon as you turn it in. I wish he had stayed so I could have explained that to him. But, you know, if somebody provides information to the board, it's a very natural thing for us to discuss with our staff the material that was provided and ask the staff to investigate it and to, you know, I guess, you know, our situation is if we hadn't investigated, well, then we would be ignoring people. If we do investigate, then we're doing something wrong there, too. Stanley, when you provide a document to this board, it becomes a public record under the Freedom of Information Act. There's no such thing as I gave it to you confidentially, you can't tell anybody else about it. Any member of the public or press can get a copy of that. The moment you hand it to us, it becomes a public record. And so, you know, there was no breach of any confidentiality here, and it's natural for the board, if it's provided with information, to ask its staff to investigate things and find out what the facts are. And, you know, that's all that happened there. I mean, you know, on the one hand, you know, if you had handed us something and we ignored it, then you'd say, well, geez, you know, I'm providing information to the board, and they're ignoring me. So we didn't ignore you. We got your papers. We handed it to the staff. We said, look into this stuff, and that's all that was.
Okay, because when I did that before, I came before the board before about privatizing and stuff like that, the board never responded to me when I was asking what they were going to plan on privatizing or whatever. I finally talked to Mr. Rich Roodel, and he gave me the information that I needed. But if I come to the board, and this is not only with that, but there's other incidents before, a couple of years ago, we had a big snowstorm. I asked a question to the board about, you know, the state laws about shutting down the highway for safety for our guys coming, and I mentioned that, too. The board never responded.
Yeah, and I followed up with Dr. Rivera, and he followed up with you. I mean, you know, you've got to understand the different roles, okay? The board is not the administrator of the school system. We set policy, we set budgets, we approve contracts, and we appoint a superintendent and monitor his performance in the top staff. A lot of the things that you bring here are not things that are policy decisions for us. I mean, if you say, you know, you've come and said, we don't have enough supplies. Anytime you've said that, I always talk to Manny and say, find out what's going on. Do they need more supplies? Get them more supplies. But it's Manny's job and Rich Roodel's job and the facilities director's job to deal with the details of that. That's just not what we do. So I can assure you that when people come to this board and ask questions or follow up, I mean, Manny can confirm this, we have conversations all the time. I take, I mean, I take, during the public speaking sections of these meetings, I very often take six or seven pages of notes. And then I'll go home, look at the notes, look at the things that need to be follow-ups. I'll go over them with Manny, and he does follow them up. It's a regular part of what we do. But you're not going to necessarily hear back from me because I'm not the administrator. He is, Rich is, the other people there. So if you hear from them as a result of something you brought to our attention, that's the way it should be. That we should acknowledge an issue that people bring to us, but it's the administration that has to carry out the guts of the activity. You know, one of the things that they teach board members when we go to retreats is understand your role versus the superintendent's role. And there is a continuous tendency among all boards of education to try to micromanage, to get into the minutia of where a teacher gets assigned, or where a contract gets signed, or how much money gets spent on paper, or things like that. That's almost the definition of a dysfunctional board. A functional board hires good people and has them manage that kind of stuff and concentrates on policy. So that's what we're trying to do. So if you hear from Mr. Roodel, or Dr. Rivera, or somebody else in facilities or whatever as a result of something you said here, that's us doing our job, which is to make sure they follow up, but not to interfere in the direct process. Okay?
All right.
All right? Good. Thank you. All right, next item is superintendent's report. Dr. Rivera?
Sure, I just wanted to report on a few items, and I think the first one involves all of us at this dais. I was looking at the calendar the other day and looking at organizing certain topics for, that could be appropriate for board committees, as well as follow-up for the board on various strategic initiatives, and at the same time realizing that in about 60 days, my staff and I have to come to grips with recommendations for a budget for the 2015-2016 school year. That is right around the corner. And at the same time that that's around the corner, there are updates on everything from a textbook selection committee for social studies that has to go to the curriculum committee, very monthly financial reports, program updates. We've committed to looking at our graduation policy, our student placement policy. There should be an update on K-5 literacy, after-school program expansion. We need to establish a facility spec committee for the pre-K site that we hopefully will be able to open a year from now, pre-K center, NEAS, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. And at the same time that we have those various program updates, as we gear up for the budget process, you know, we will share the calendar at the finance committee meeting, which calls for another round of focus groups within the community. And one way that I thought of improving decision-making at budget time is that we use some of our committees, and I'm going to send a proposal to the board, that we use some of our committees to host more detailed topics on certain subjects. For example, one of our recommendations will address our desire to get a greater control over out-of-district placement of special needs students. And that means what will we be doing? How will we be operating our program? And it would seem to me to be an appropriate fitting discussion for the curriculum committee. Another discussion may well be the use of Title I funds. As a district, we have been required to target more than $2.1 million to specific schools under what's known as targeted assistance. However, as we get back data on the percentage of free and reduced lunch, when it exceeds 50%, there may be a shift in how we use Title I funding, and that would be an appropriate discussion. Teacher aides would be an appropriate discussion, school safety. So what I want to do is, in working with my staff, make certain that each of the liaisons to the various committees, that they're working with all the board chairs around what would be a schedule over the next two to three, 60 to 90 days, of appropriate topics that will both help with the budget process as well as some critical items for sharing as opposed to ancillary items that might be able to wait until after the new year. So that's the first item, and I will be forwarding to the board some suggestions to that effect. Leadership expectations. We've been talking since last spring about issues around culture change, around student engagement, around how we monitor student progress. In fact, that is going to be a topic at our next curriculum committee meeting as we get into more detail around that. And I just wanted to share with you that that is a major initiative that's still progressing, and in fact, we have developed a set of more precise indicators that go along with these broad expectations. So we want to have clear expectations about student engagement, student progress monitoring. Then we want to be clear about what are the indicators of you meeting, of a leader at a school meeting that particular standard. And so we're beginning those discussions with principals now. In fact, the elementary principal meeting is tomorrow afternoon, and we will be working with them around what is appropriate evidence of meeting certain indicators. Tony and I have created a schedule of two to three days where we will be going out for two to three days at each school for several hours as part of our site visits with schools organized around those key expectations. The idea here is to build greater consistency and really create a floor for certain essential leadership and school expectations and standards, which we have been lacking in the system, and to create, I would have to tell you, greater accountability across all of our schools. So the standards initiative is a key initiative. I also can't underscore the fact that some of our key foundations are very supportive of this. The GE Foundation is funding this initiative, as well as the Nellie May Foundation, and I'm pleased with that. Just a couple of smaller items, not small, they're actually big items, but in comparison to those other items. I had a very good meeting with Department of Public Works as we gear up for the winter season. After what we went through last year where we had to cancel schools eight or nine times, I lose track, we thought it appropriate to walk through with them some adjustments that we could make, that they're anticipating making, so that, you know, we can make a better call on snow days and a more timely one and make sure we have accurate information. Tony and I had a good meeting with their staff, and the mayor, the mayor joined us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I felt it was a very, very productive meeting. The DPW is putting into place some changes that we think will help us, give us more timely information, and we should be in sync on the condition of all of our schools and the driveways and the walkways, as well as the roads, and be able to make good decisions. Because as we make decisions about school closings, which is critically important, there are thousands of children's lives at risk when you don't pay attention to safety, and we just think that knowing the conditions of our roads and schools is key, along with data that we look at. So that's my final argument.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
You know, one thing that seems to be ignored or going through in the past with snow clearing is, you know, we were the last man on the totem pole. You know, I forget what we spend a million, how many millions of dollars a day to run our schools, but I think it's a couple million or more. It's a big number. And so if we suspend school and then have to roll another day of school in June, you know, that's costing a lot of money. And it's not just the school system, but for all taxpayers. And so it seems very inefficient for DPW to leave us last, when really, maybe we should be first. So I don't know if that came up at all, but I thought I would just ask how that was broached. And the other issue is, we've had problems where this part's Parks and Rec, this part's DPW, this part's custodians, and, you know, stuff doesn't get done. So I don't know if that was talked about either.
The, that's a good point, and particularly around maintenance of the outdoors area, grass cutting, and so on and so forth. The meeting that we had yesterday, today, again, sorry, I lose track of time, really focused on snow removal and this whole issue of priority and making sure that when we make the call, we know for a fact that our driveways are going to be hopefully clear and have good reliable information with regard to it. And I think, I mean, there was one instance where I couldn't get to our school, but there was so much snow that it really didn't happen until noon or 1:00 the following day. But I felt very comfortable with them. We were actually going to, Tony and I are going to join them in a meeting in the near future to walk through the detail of what they follow and how and when they plan and commit to doing our school grounds.
Okay, good.
But the, not to beat a dead horse here, but the grassman is a good one in terms of grass cutting. Don't get me going on that one. But that was, that's one that requires, I think, another look and better coordination on our part, and both on our part and their part, and I think it's another, it's the second meeting that we should have.
But it just seems like, you know, Parks and Rec doesn't have a vested interest in our schools looking good, in our, you know, everything being as shipshape as it can be. They've got, you know, Cranberry Park, calf pasture, and all these other things. We're just not a priority. And it seems like maybe, you know, there'd be a big change, but it is the new Norwalk Way, so maybe, you know, at some point, it should be discussed, I would think. Seems very inefficient.
No, I just may have a comment to remind, one of the complaints we got last year with all this snow was that private property owners were not cleaning their sidewalks around the school. A lot of the kids walk in the middle of the street just to get to school. And I think, I don't know if we asked the mayor if he could send a message out or somehow get the message out that you really should clean up the sidewalks so the kids can get and not walk in the middle of the street.
Yeah, that's been a problem for quite some time, and, you know, there are so many dynamics involved with people who are perhaps elderly or handicapped and not able to get out and do it, or struggling with trying to find a way that we can accommodate all that and do so in a timely fashion, because you're right, sometimes it goes three or four days. We're looking at a whole way of enforcement and fining, and, but you want to get willing compliance, so it's a struggle, but we're trying to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to next item on the agenda. This is item one, consent calendar, which would be, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which is A, the approval of personnel, and B, approval of the Brian McMahon field trip. Mr. Kasimis moves. Is there a second? Mr. Barbas seconds. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent calendar? Please indicate. It's unanimous? Thank you. All right, next item is approval for designation of September as National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15, 2014. Motion made by Mr. Kasimis to approve the resolution and packet. Is there a second, Ms. Harris? Any discussion? Okay, here are no discussion. All in favor of approving the resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month? Please indicate. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next item is approval of budget transfer amendment to policy 3160, transfer of funds between categories. Now, this actually came to us, I guess, out of the finance committee. So, and I've determined that apparently it has not yet been reviewed by the policy committee, which should review it. Rich, if I could just ask a question, the, I think this needs a little bit of tweaking. The existing policy, and this is just, I think should go to the policy committee for review, gives the Board of Education the power to transfer unexpended, uncontracted fortune, blah, blah, blah. And the language here says the superintendent designate may transfer amounts not to exceed $10,000, which I personally think is a good idea. It's small transfers shouldn't have to come to the board. But I think we, I think the language needs to include scenarios where you're over $10,000, which is not really addressed here. So I think what I'd like to see the policy committee do is take a look at this and make sure that the language is amended in such a way that we can set $10,000 or whatever the board wants as sort of a minimum transfer level, but that the language explicitly provides that anything above that should come to the full board for review. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, that was the, the intention was anything over $10,000 would go to the full board.
Okay, all right. So it just needs a little bit of tweaking. This may be 10 minutes of the agenda. All right, so Chair would entertain a motion to refer this item to the policy committee for further review. Mr. Kasimis moves. Ms. Keyes seconds. Discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate. All right, so this is referred to the policy, and I think, Heidi, you may be able to take this up at your next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next, item five, approval of Norwalk Federation of Educational Personnel, NFEP, contract. Over to you, Mr. Barbas, negotiations chair.
Yes, so I have, I guess, are we going to go into executive session to discuss this, or how do you want?
We don't have to.
Okay.
I think we're pretty much okay for a public discussion. We're pretty much there.
This is going to prove it, yeah. I will provide you all with summary document, and also there was an enhancement proposal that, I'll explain in a second, that I'm going to. And I will note that the NFEP ratified this unanimously earlier today.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure this memo that I'm sorting out is marked confidential and is from our attorney, so I don't know if I should be distributing this publicly, Mr. Lyons, your attorney?
Unless we're in executive session, it's okay to discuss it in public. Typically, we go into exec session when we've, we're hot and heavy in the middle of the negotiation. Here, we're about at the 99.9 percent mark.
So, we've been working on this since the spring, I think maybe since March, and it was a collaborative effort between Board of Ed and NFEP, including Mr. Mallion, Gerd, and Donna Versace, who's actually not in the union anymore, and now Suits Trufalino, who is in the new leadership position with NFEP. So anyway, we started this in the spring. There are about 405 of our employees are in this union, and they represent a payroll of about $13 million. We did come up with an agreement on April 15 over salary and insurance, and then we have been working since then on what we call enhancements. The previous contract had expired on June 30 of 2013. You know, the NFEP union had really been impacted by the budget cuts, by the budget turmoil we had gone through, and we really felt that we needed to rectify that situation. And so we really worked to, you know, we really wanted to give our employees in the NFEP more opportunities and to make them stronger, prayer professionals by providing them educational opportunities so that they would be even better and stronger employees. If you look in the new contract, which is in the budget packet, it's the clean copy. I do have red line copies if anyone's interested, but there were some language changes. We did clarify some contradictory language. We did restore hours, which I think is probably one of the single biggest things we did. We cut a lot of employees' hours in the budget turmoil, everything from secretaries to middle school library aides, and those hours were all restored. In addition, we have a series of enhancements which are kind of, well, some of them are being implemented immediately, some of them we will be implementing over the next two years. And we are clarifying, we had eight job groups. One of our job titles was switchboard operator. So we have joined the 21st century. We've cleaned this up.
As in plugs, like this, switchboard operator.
Most of you are all the deaf to remember.
You've seen those in the movies.
Ah, yeah, exactly. So now we've reduced that from eight groups to five. We do not have the switchboard operator title. We have joined the 21st century, and we have really, I think, it was a win-win for all parties, and everyone's very pleased with the outcome. As I said, NFEP ratified it today unanimously, and I hope the Board of Ed will do the same this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Kasimis?
Yeah, I'm noticing that everything is retro 9114. Has this been already budgeted for?
Yes, yeah, we're financially, we are able to do this.
Heidi? No, I just want to thank my staff for their work on this, and I appreciate, Mike, Barbas, your leadership in working with the NFEP, and Bruce, and the NFEP president. So all in all, this is what I would consider a win-win contract, and it also, in some of the enhancements, for example, recognizing the role of school secretaries more and more as becoming office managers, and the kind of skill sets that are going to be needed as we go forward in the future is very important. So thank you for all this work and this effort.
Are you?
Yeah, no, just, Mike, you did a great job. I know you worked really hard on this. I just have one last question. Do we have a dollar amount, what it's going to cost?
What's that?
What's the dollar amount, total dollar amount for the year?
Well, it's a little hard to quantify. I mean, there was, you know, in terms of, there was a salary and wage. Most of our NFEP employees do not qualify for insurance. They are on the plan, you know, the HSA that all our employees are going to be on. They are on the plan, you know, the HSA that all our employees are, are going to be on. I don't know if, Rich, you have an exact number? I, we've worked on so many versions, I can't remember specifically.
Well, it's approximately 300,000.
300,000? Okay. Again, thanks. Mike, you did a great job, really.
But I think the thing too, if you are interested, is to really read this list of enhancements.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of really, you know, a lot of it's detailed, but it's, I think, important detail, that we're really doing the right thing and really, you know, we're going to have our employees, we're going to create, one thing I should mention, which I think we haven't really finalized this, but we are going to create kind of an in-house academy or university.
Yes.
For our, our employees to get, you know, the latest, greatest in terms of training so that they really can be better employees.
Good. Thank you.
I also want to thank Mike for the outstanding job. I know this is really hard and a lot of work, time put into this, and I think it's great, you know, 2012, 13, we had to reduce a lot of the hours of our personnel, and it's great that we're able to get those hours back. I think that's huge for families out there. I think it really makes a difference for our employees. And I also like the idea of the professional development that we really need, especially for our assistants. They're hands-on, they're right in the classroom, and I think we need to have professional development. That's good. Thank you.
Hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment that, first off, the, the start of it's sort of a creative approach, which Dr. Rivera had suggested with, instead of just giving a flat increase percentage, why don't we take some of that funding and use it for enhancing positions, to upgrade positions, provide better training, and, and allow people to, to move up into, you know, higher level job responsibilities. That was a very creative way of dealing with, with sort of a set amount of money that we had available in our budget that we could use. And there are, there's clearly been gives and takes on both sides. Both sides have, have brought things to the table. You know, the employees have agreed, as the other unions have, to hire premium cost shares and deductibles and things like this so we can save money on our insurance coverages, while we also increased hours for employees to get them back up to where they were before 2012. There's been a lot of, I think, good changes in the contract language in terms of increasing the flexibility of the superintendent and the staff in terms of filling of vacancies, promotions and things of that sort. This has been one of the things that we've been working on with all of our contracts is to, is to put administrative authority back in the hands of the superintendent, which for many years had been sort of devolved away, leaving these contracts, and we're bringing this back now, so the superintendent really has the authority to, to run the school system. And the enhancements are excellent. I mean, you know, we're restoring hours, we're providing the, the academy. We have grandfathered certain kinds of benefits and things which are no longer really appropriate in the economy so that people who currently receive them are protected, but the new employees would have different benefits packages that would be less expensive. So in the long run, this will reduce the impact on taxpayers as well. And I do want to add my thanks to Mike Barbis. Mike has been working like having a second full-time job on these contracts, not just NFEP, but NFT, NASA and other contracts. You know, the chairmanship of negotiations committee is by far the toughest job on this board. It takes a tremendous amount of time, and I really want to thank you, A, for putting in the time, but B, for bringing us good products.
I will say one thing on NFEP is, you know, the whole inspiration for this, at the end of the day, really was Manny Rivera, and he was the one who wanted to be right by the NFEP, and that's where this all came from. You know, we were just acting, following, following his orders at the end.
All right, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve the contract with NFEP as included in the packet. Ms. Keys moves. Is there a second? Ms. Harris seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate. And it is unanimous, thank you very much. Good job. All right, next item on the agenda is August 2014 Financial Monthly Report. Mr. Rudel, how we doing?
So for the first two months of the new fiscal year, we've spent 7.7, $10.3 million against an adjusted budget of 166.4. So we've only spent 6% of our operating budget. Typically, everything kind of picks up more in September, that's the first pay period for the teacher, so it is still quid pro.
Okay. So that's sort of expected at this early stage in the budget. Okay. Well, you did a real good job at the last one, so we're, we're looking for another outstanding performance this year. Any questions? No? Okay. Next is Committee and Representative Reports. Mr. Kessimus, any reports?
Yes, I have one quick report. As you know, every year I get EFAC passes for the board to encourage you to go and support our teams. So, Mr. Mettaferry was kind enough to get them for him, instead of got them for me today. So I will pass them out.
Dr. Rivera, yours too.
You do, you're on the games you don't have to pay.
Tony, Tony, we got yours too. Mr. Mayor, I can get you one too if you'd like.
Our one perk.
I'll order one for you as well. All right, here's the rest of your pass down. One, two, three, four. All right.
So.
They usually charge me double.
Those are just regular board members.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It was our best to get out there and see those teams.
Yes, yes.
All right, Curriculum Committee, we, we rescheduled the meeting this month because of some scheduling conflicts, but we have, we have some fairly busy agendas coming up. I'm, I'm working on finishing up the, we're rescheduling this meeting, but there are a number of topics that we're going to take up, have a special meeting on issues like student confidentiality, monitoring of student progress, planned steps for intervention, intervention for student partners, et cetera. We also will be having a meeting, I believe, October 14th, where we're going to have, we may have a report on minority student achievement data. We're going to get a update on BRIGGS. We're going to have a meeting with Mr. Dodona to talk about the upcoming World Language and Social Studies curriculum updates that are, you know, we've, we've, now that we've got the English and mathematics done for Common Core, it doesn't stop there. It's going to start right up again with all of these other ones. And so we're going to have some busy agendas with curriculum coming up soon. Ms. Keys, Policy?
Policy will be this month, September 30th. We're still working on the agenda, but there will be quite a, quite a bit on there. We will be reviewing Policy 3160, amongst other things that we'll be reviewing.
Okay. So, Mike, what else have you got on your agenda?
Just to be.
It never stops.
I was forgetting, so we did, you know, we started with NFEP probably in March, and, you know, now we're, we're done, basically. I am happy to report, we are, we've been negotiating with NASA, which is our administrators. We have about 58 administrators covered by that contract, and it's a payroll roughly of about eight and a half million dollars. That contract follows by state statute a very strict calendar of when you start negotiating, when mediation starts, when arbitration starts. We really should have gotten started late June, July, but we got started in August. It was very hard to juggle everyone's calendar, but we did get three rounds of negotiations in, but we, we did not come to an agreement. And so we went to, and had a mediation session on September 3rd, and went very late that night or early the next morning, but we just, we were close, but we just, we, we got to an impasse. We could not come to an agreement. So the first round of arbitration is scheduled for this coming Friday at 8:00 AM. But our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Rivera, did have kind of a final discussion with Tony Dietricho, who's the president of that union, and they were able to come to an agreement. And so we will not be going to arbitration, but we now have a negotiated settlement. We won't be telling the arbitrators bye-bye. The key points, I think, I would say that were debated in this, these negotiations, where we had some very positive changes in work rules. These employees will now be required to be on direct deposit, which saves us a lot of money. There's a provision, something called severance. That provision is being grandfathered. But probably the single biggest thing is this is our last group of employees who were on old-fashioned insurance, health insurance, and they will now go on to HSA like everybody else. And that will actually start even earlier than we had thought it would. It will start January 1, 2015. So certain other benefits were grandfathered. We really are very, you know, it was a very acceptable compromise. I think both parties, it was another win-win. And the GWI increase will be 2.5% each year. That's the gross wage increase plus step for the three years of this contract, which is 15, 16, 17, 17, 18. So I think we'll probably see that contract. They'll, they'll need to ratify it first, and then it will come to the board, you know, I don't know, maybe in two weeks or maybe in four weeks. One of the upcoming board members, board meetings. We're also negotiating with our food service workers. That has been like incredibly challenging. They have a very specific work schedule, and we really weren't able to meet this summer. We've rescheduled a number of meetings this fall, and we have just not been able to get together. But we are now shooting for October 7th for our next session, and we really didn't make a lot of progress before, so hopefully they'll come. And as everyone knows, excuse me, there is a re opener for the last year, the NFT contract, the teachers' contract, and we are working on that, but we will, we're on the same timeline as NASA. We won't, we can't come to an agreement. We will have to go to arbitration on Friday.
Okay, good report. Thank you very much. Ms. Harris, you had a report?
I just have a question.
Okay, question?
Have we come up with a date for the Curriculum Committee as yet?
Uh, no, apparently, I had asked people about the 30th, but that conflicts with the Policy Committee. So that's one of my to-dos, is to come up with another meeting date that everybody can, can make. There's a lot of important stuff that we got to go over at that meeting, so I want to make sure that's rescheduled. Okay, any board member announcements? Ms. Keys?
Do you want to start, Mr. Kessimus?
No, you start, ladies.
Are you sure?
You start.
Okay. Went to the second installment of Literacy for Parents for their children. I see Mr. Millian looking over here. Some members of the board attended, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Rivera, Mayor Rilling, right, and Mike Barbis as well. It's really, I believe, the brainchild of Bruce. It's a literacy program that's aligned to Common Core standards. Second installment, I believe we're going to have a third one coming up and then a fourth one as well. It's just an amazing, amazing program. It's really about the fundamentals of reading, reading to your children. We have two parent coordinators, project coordinators, Fran and Pam, who have done an outstanding job. I actually spoke to some of the parents when I left, and they were just so happy to be a part of this. And I think it's, my hat goes off to Bruce for really being instrumental in this and bringing this out. And just basically having parents get involved in their children's education and starting very early. It's from pre-K to first grade, and I think it's so important for Norwalk. It really puts us on the map as far as our early childhood programs that we have. And again, I want to thank you for that.
Okay.
Actually, I had a suggestion from one of the food service workers. They said that every, at the end of every day, they throw out a lot of food and wanted to know if there was any rules against them donating to the shelters in Norwalk or surrounding areas.
Can we look into that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think the open door shelter, I mean, they, they'll take anything.
They didn't know if there was any policy against any health regulations that they cannot take the food and donate it, but they said they, they throw out a significant amount of food every.
Well, Artie, we should definitely, I mean, and open, I know there maybe are some food regulations, but I think open door, they.
I think it's a great suggestion, you know, all this food that's just being wasted.
Can I add on to that, Mike, if, if I can? What about any of the food that's untouched, you know, like the fruit, like the bananas, the apples, things that just are not touched at all? I mean, I agree, like, there's just wasted food that.
I think that's a lot of, they're not talking about scrap.
No, I know, but, but I'm just saying that, that's a lot of fruit, anything that just isn't touched, why we couldn't.
Correct.
I understand the food that's eaten, we're not going to, but food that just isn't touched really could go to these shelters.
Well, really, if we want to be progressive, not only should we do that, but we should be, you know, composting for all the wasted food. You know, the food that's half eaten, the kids throw in the garbage.
Why don't you suggest that to the annual or shelf?
Good idea.
We'll work on that.
I think that's huge, though. I think that's a great, I mean, it really is.
When she asked me, I said, man, that's a great, great suggestion.
Yeah.
Didn't know that we did that. Oh, yeah, it's pure waste. There's so many people out there that could eat something, you know, it's a great idea.
Good, we'll look into it.
Yep.
Any other announcements? Okay. All right, next item is approval of the minutes of September 2, 2014. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes in the packet. Mr. Kessimus moves. Ms. Keys seconds. Any changes, corrections? Mr. Kessimus?
Yeah, it says that I was not in attendance, and yet you have me making statements.
Well, you do have connections up there.
I did.
Yeah, Artie.
Beaming in.
I didn't get anywhere. So anyway, I was here.
Okay, we'll add him to the.
Thank you.
List. It's not divine intervention to give him the minutes. Any other comments, questions, corrections? All right, hearing none, then we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved. All right, last item on the agenda is evaluation of superintendent. Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of evaluation of superintendent. Mr. Kessimus moves. Ms. Keys seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And unanimous, okay. We are in executive session. Take five-minute recess and then start it up.